We're ready to go. I'll call this meeting of the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library, April 10, 2025, called a order. First order of business is the introduction form for visitors. Thanks to Trista Riggs and the staff at West Branch for having us here. Sharing with the staff earlier that this is my childhood branch, so it's good to be back home. Thank you for hosting us. And I know we have some visitors. If anyone was planning to publicly speak or comment to the board, the signup sheet is here. We don't have any signatures, but the signup sheet is with Lori in case anybody did. That's other than the hearing on the bond issue. With that, correspondence is running around in the yellow folder. So that's all appreciated and very nice. And we'll go on with the consent agenda. We have item 4A, the minutes of the March meeting. 4B, the personnel matters. 4C, the PR report. 4D is the administrative report. And 4E is the monthly public service statistics. And I present this as a motion. Or presented for a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comment or suggestions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Next order of business is preliminary determination. So we have preliminary determination hearing on the proposed construction project. If you are interested in speaking at this hearing, please make sure that you have signed in. Lori has the sign in sheet. Marcus has the sign in sheet at the back of the room there. I'm sorry. Please know that your name and address would be required. And this is a hearing for residents of Vanderburg County. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask the bond counsel, Kristin McPella-McPleland, explain the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you. Good evening. We're here tonight because anytime a library proposes to do a project that's over a certain threshold, this board must hold at least two hearings. Tonight is the first, and then May 8th at the Oakland branch will be our second hearing. The purpose of this hearing is really to inform the public and to allow them to ask any questions they may have about our upcoming project. At this hearing, you will hear maximum dollar amounts when Jason gets to his part of the hearing. Again, this is the very first part of the legal process and will only set maximums. You could always, if you rest, you could just never issue one.
We will now hear from Scott Kenny, EVPL CEO, about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the needs for the project.
Thank you, Rick. In 2021, excuse me, EVPL contracted with MKM Architecture and Design to work with the staff, the EVPL Board, and the Vanderburg County residents to create an EVPL facilities master plan. The plan recommends reflecting demographic trends, surveys, and evaluations of our current library buildings. Since the adoption of that plan by the EVPL Board of Trustees, EVPL Administration has begun four library location renovation projects at McCullough, North Park, Central, and Oakland. The EVPL Red Bank location was a high priority project, but was one that required more time in which to prepare for. With the assistance of our owners' representatives, Veritas, and our architects, MKM, we assessed the properties within the EVPL Red Bank service area and compared and contrasted them with our current location site. In collaboration with our Building and Grounds Committee, which is made up of our library, three of our library board members, we found that our current site still holds great value to that area. And with the purchase of an adjacent piece of property of that land, we could expand the Red Bank location footprint. The purchase of that property is now underway at this time. Like with our prior projects, based on the current assessed valuation, it's anticipated that the Red Bank project will not increase the debt service fund tax rate or the bond interest in redemption fund tax rate.
Thank you, Scott. We will now hear from Lamont Kelsey, EVPL Director of Facilities and Maintenance, about how the proposed project meets the needs as described by the CEO.
Thanks, Rick. This project will either provide an addition to the current building along with a major renovation of the existing structure or will build a new building on the existing site. The current Red Bank location was built smaller than originally intended. It is not as large as the other regional locations. As part of the Facilities Master Plan project, EVPL defined regional branches to be locations that are approximately 20,000 square feet in order to provide the size of a proper collection and allow for space needs. The Red Bank project is designed to expand the square footage of this location from 12,500 feet to 20,000 square feet. The project will also expand parking and will create a green space available for exterior library programming. The EVPL Red Bank addition or rebuild will provide a regional facility for the west side with amenities that the community wants and needs and that are equal to what other regional facilities like McCullough, North Park, and Oakland have currently. Additional research, study, and financial examination will be done by Veritas, MKM, and EVPL Administration, which will thereby help us determine whether an addition or rebuild is the best course of action. The recommendation would go to the Building and Grounds Committee and to the EVPL Board prior to a final bond sale. We expect that we will be able to begin construction on this project in the spring of 2026.
Thanks, Lamont. We will now hear from Baker Attila, LLP, our municipal advisor, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you very much. My name is Jason Tantel. I'm a director with Baker Attila, and we represent the library as your municipal advisor. Now that we've had an opportunity to hear about the project's scope and need, we will review how the libraries can issue a $12 million general obligation bond payable from property taxes in the libraries that service on. It's important to keep in mind tonight that we are reviewing maximum parameters. And these are maximums that we cannot exceed, but we can come down from. They would include items such as the borrowing amount, the repayment term, the maximum annual payment, and the most maximum interest rate. As already discussed here before, we can always come down from these amounts. We just cannot exceed them. So our intent is that this provides flexibility to the library to accomplish this project, all while meeting its desired goal of not increasing the debt service tax rate. We do a presentation here that explains the current debt service, excuse me, the current bond outstanding in the library debt service fund, because this is an important factor as to how this can be accomplished without increasing the tax rate. So here on this first slide, we have detailed the annual payments of the three bonds currently outstanding of the library. You will see that the library has all debt, excuse me, all debt totaled in 2025 of approximately $3,739,000. All debt is repaid by 2030. And you can see that there are decreasing payments from 2025 to 2026, and again, from 2025 to 2028. Is this decreasing debt service structure that would allow the library to potentially replace these payments, not exceeding $3,739,000? And thus, assuming these sets of values remain constant, that we would not be anticipating an increase to the library's debt service tax rate?
Can someone who knows translate those into projects? I think 2022 is like McCullough. But what are the other three?
2023 is Oakland. I'm sorry, is North Park and Central, and 24 is Oakland. And there's a copy of this in your.
I think next slide really illustrates the fact that you can see visually, all three bonds are represented by their own individual color. The 2022 is in yellow, the 2023 is in gray, the 2024 is in blue. But that annually, you can see we're at $3,739,000 in this year in 2025, with a drop of about 2.3 million in 2026, all debt being repaid by 2030. So again, this is the type of structure that would potentially allow the library to replace these payments, to not increase the tax rate. The bonds being detailed tonight are also what we call general obligation bonds. And these are direct borrowings of the library, and there is a limitation as to how much we could issue. This limitation is 2% of one-third of the most recent NSS value, which you can see for Vanderburg County is very strong at 9.3 billion. Also factoring in those three bonds that are currently outstanding, you'd see that there is $52,401,000 available to the library for a general obligation bond. So the $12 million bonds being discussed here tonight fit well within this parameter. The next slide, we have summary of the financial information that you would see within the resolutions should a library decide to move forward. I'm going to focus on the maximums that we're not going to exceed, which would be, of course, a borrowing amount, 12 million not to exceed. The repayment term not to exceed is 15 years or January 15, 2021. The maximum annual payment not to exceed is $3,739,200. And also, the maximum interest rate not to exceed is 6%. We also did provide total estimated interest costs based upon a 5% interest rate. You can see that there, that's the fourth line item, that is $5,347,000. The 2025 debt service fund tax rate is 3.65 cents. We would not anticipate an increase over this level in 2026 or thereafter. And our sixth and final slide would illustrate this point, that assuming the maximum repayment term of 15 years, the maximum borrowing amount of 12 million, and the 5% interest rate, you would see that the library would not see an increase in its debt service tax rate. We anticipate that tax rate to be the same or less in 2026, and then declines thereafter. Again, with that 15-year repayment term extending to beginning year 2020. At the time, I would turn it over to the board to answer any questions that they have.
Why have all the recent obligations been the four, five, six year and until the 15-year term?
Part of the reason is we are looking at the amount of this bond issuance is larger than the others. The 2022 bond was 4 million, the 2023 bond was 6 million, and the 2024 bond was 3.96 million. So this being $12, excuse me, $12 million, the larger repayment term did make some sense as far as building in the ability to have payments declining in 2028, 2029, and so on and so forth. Again, this is the maximum repayment term. We could always shorten this repayment term if the library wanted to.
Well, it seems like they're doing about a 10-year and have to be a little bit more in the first or second year, but then get back to a lower amount in the next eight years. So a lot less interest being paid.
We did run the interest cost analysis on the loan here. And just for the board's information, that was approximately 4.5 million of interest costs, whereas this interest cost you see here is 5,350,000.
So saving almost $2 million.
Correct, by 150,000.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which is located with Marcus Mercer in the back, EVPL Administrative Assistant. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address, limit your comments to the proposed project and financing, keep any comments to three minutes, and avoid being repetitive if possible. May I have the sign in sheet now? And I will begin calling names of those who are interested in speaking. Oh, okay. It'll take a while. So with no one having signed up, is there anyone else who would like to speak? If so, please state your name and address, sign in. It's sign in sheet.
Not using the sheets. Go ahead.
Does anyone want to say? All right. Well, thank you to everyone who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time, your engagement, and the commitment to the future of our community libraries. Please note that this hearing is the first step in the legal process. No actions being taken at the boot by the board at this time. As the purpose of the hearing is solely to gather public input, the board will continue collaborating with the administration and its professional advisors to identify efficiencies that conserve tax dollars while addressing the needs of our community. The board will hold a second public hearing at EVPL Oakland on May 8, 2025, at 4:30 PM. I believe the hearing is now.
And can I ask a question? I have a question too. So I thought Bob made a good point about, you know, the 10-year versus 15-years, especially, you know, your point was, well, we had to go longer to. If we did go, say, 10-years, would that current, our current tax rate that we're collecting, you know, would that be able to handle a shorter period of time? Or would we be forced to raise the tax rate?
I do believe that a 10-year structure would fit within the parameters set forth as far as not increasing the tax rate above.
That would be on the 15-year. I guess my question was, would it work for a 10-year?
I believe it would, yeah.
Oh, you believe it would? Okay.
It would be like this. Another.
Of course, 2%. Right, yeah. Or a 2 cent, yeah.
And just another point as well about the maximum term of 15-years, just thinking about this type of project and matching useful life of the building somewhat with a little bit longer repayment term. So there is that part of it as well. We don't have to use the 15-year, but that was another point to that maximum term of 15-years. So I think it would be useful.
I just really think it's a better idea to pay with less tax money and interest if you don't have to.
Absolutely.
And this is just maximums. So you could come down in amount and terms. But we always like to be conservative in the maximums.
I just, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I had two questions. One is about maximum of something else. This is about only a Red Bank project, right? It's not about anything else. The language in the first paragraph of the, I guess, draft, Declaration? That's the next line, yes. Okay. Well, what can we do now? I want to fade into it. Go ahead, do you? Well, it indicates that it's going to be a replacement of Red Bank, blah, 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 including purchase of real estate equipment and technology throughout the library district and paving site improvements throughout the library district, which seems to be more open-ended than just being Red Bank.
The reason that the language is broader is because it, the way that you all, so what it is, it will issue the bonds, how it's worked in the past, if you tell, we issue the bonds, then you go to bid. If the, and they use alternates and V-DAX to make sure that you can get the Red Bank branch. But if bids come in lower, like if you have $100,000 left, we want to be able to spend that, because you've already issued the bonds. You can't pay them all. So you want to be able to do equipment at Red Bank or equipment somewhere else. But again, we'll wait to sell, but we won't have bids in hand, so we won't know for sure. So just in case your bids come in lower than you thought, and there is extra money, you would be able to spend it wherever else the library needs it.
So if we issued a $12 million bond and it came back at 9 million, we'd have 3 million as a slush fund?
You wouldn't issue that much and have a slush fund ever. So that we've worked, as you know, we've worked with architects over, you know, I think the past year or so on Red Bank. So we have project estimates. We would never do 3 million, but sometimes it could be 100,000 or a contingency amount. But then you have to spend it. And sometimes libraries, schools, municipalities want to make sure that it can be spent on what is needed throughout the library district.
Much like our Oakland project where the original, when we did our first hearings, it said up to 6 million, I think, was the number we started. By the time we actually sold that bond, we were able to get those financials better in order. So the bond openly sold for 3.96. That is, that is the intent for this too. So the 12 is the maximum. And then once we figure out how that project will go, whether it's a rebuild or the addition, we'll have better financing numbers and what it potentially would cost.
But there's no intent to actually be doing other things throughout the district. This is intended to be this project.
It just provides flexibility in that, in that potential scenario where you do have a potential savings, and you don't want to lose that opportunity.
And the bond proceeds. So in the McCullough, we ended up with bond proceeds because for quite a while, we weren't spending. And by your spending, of course, you're earning. So all of our projects have been written with renovation and expansion and equipment throughout the system. So we were able to use the McCullough bond interest on some other workstations, technology, equipment. And actually, we're still spending at McCullough even now to finish out that bond.
But at McCullough, not at Red Bank or at what, West or East?
Well, some of it is usable throughout the system. So tables and chairs, for example, can be used anywhere throughout the system.
I can ask, okay, back to my question kind of coming off of what Bob said. Is there a financial reason to go 15-years versus 10-years? I mean, what would be the financial purpose of going for a longer term if it's still? Because you're, we're going to collect the .02 regardless, right?
Well, the dotted line is what our tax rate will be each year.
Okay. So the tax rate, so the financial reason would be a lower tax rate?
Correct. In the future, you would see with the longer repayment term, that rate would be closer to one penny, right? The 1.16 cents. If we shorten that, then it could potentially be something with two, two and a half cent range. So the, the, the one potential positive of a longer repayment term, of course, balancing with interest expense, is flexibility for the future. The unknown is the future. If you ever, there's other parts of the capital project plan that the library has.
Yeah. And but I would think that then the advantage of going to the shorter term is we're going to, you know, we'd save, like what you said.
A million dollars, just under a million.
Yeah, just a million dollars. But that would get us to getting that point, 016, down to zero. Quicker, right?
Absolutely. And we would be happy to show that to the board as well. We can absolutely look at the 10-year term.
So it'd be like buying a car, 36 months or 72 months. We pay you less per month if you pay for a lot longer than we'll.
Yeah, right.
Any other comments, questions?
But if we, there's a reason I'm not a finance guy. So, you know, our tax rate is right here, and we've got this set in here. I assume that we do it like this to create capacity in 2027, 2028, 2029, to do something else like this branch, Stringtown, some of the others that we're also on our master plan to look at. And that's the way we forecasted it out like this, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's the intent, to provide that capacity without ever having to raise our taxes and stay at the current level.
Exactly.
Correct?
There's, there's abilities to replace these payments in 2028, for example.
So this picture is based on what we know today.
At the maximum, yes.
But you would be able to, if you did the 10-year term, prior to the 10-year term, you're basically doing what we're doing now. Oh, hey, we could go out and do another, you know, note for another extended time for another project.
Correct.
Because it's, it's paid down five years quicker. So you'd be able to do something, you know.
But.
10, 7, 8 years from now, you say, hey, we know in a couple of years, we're going to have to do another project. We're going to be dropping off down to zero. We could have room to do another project, you know, where we might not have as much room.
And don't take me wrong, because I, I understand completely, and I agree that everything we can do to save taxpayer dollars, we ought to be at least contemplating it and considering it. But if we were to do that, and let's say we do a 10-year and cap it out to get us to 10-years for the next 10-years, there is no doing a Stringtown if an opportunity comes along. There is no doing an E-SLUP sign during, we're going to wait 10-years.
It would be just not, it would be with this number. There would still be room, just less room than is there.
Well, it just depends on how that math works out. If you're going to push this up, I mean, because the math might work out, you could get it done in eight-years. And then we're going to go down that path. Why wouldn't we consider reverse engineer this and just figure what's the shortest possible period we're doing?
But I guess we would also have to look, I mean, what you, how many of these libraries are currently going to be remodeling? And then they would have to tell us that, hey, here's ones that we see they're ending their life expectancy at this date or a diminished life expectancy at certain days.
And I think that's what this capacity is kind of trying to tell us without spelling it out.
Yeah, that's based off your long-range plan.
Yeah. You've already adopted the facilities plan we've outlined, which branches need to be done. Stringtown was a very high priority. We just don't have property for at this point to do it. Otherwise, it would be ahead of Red Bank, which is our probably second biggest, highest priority. And then you go to the East and West Libraries that we would love to get ADA compliant input in addition on with the elevator so people could use these facilities too. And then there's always the possibility of a north branch in the county further north that was talked about in the facilities plan as well. So all this has been outlined and adopted by the board with the priority list of how we should go through this.
As a general plan for the future, but.
As a general plan for the future, correct. Money being allowable and capacity being allowable, correct.
Is it possible, if you're coming back in the next meeting we have on this, to bring diagrams also that show a shorter amount? And maybe go ahead and throw in an estimate for another project and see how it would fit in there if it started in two or three-years? So we have all the numbers that we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Hearing none. There is no action to be taken from no item there. So we will move on to item 6A, the Declaration of Intent to Reimburse Expenditures. Under this, if the library pays any preliminary costs related to the project in advance of receiving the bond proceeds, it may want to reserve its ability to reimburse from bond proceeds after the closing. The Internal Revenue Service requires that a library declares official intent to reimburse is documented in this resolution. In order to reserve its ability to reimburse, I will entertain a motion. So move second of a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Same sign opposed? Thank you. Motion passing. Now you're ready, Lori, for the Report of Appropriations.
In UPAK is the month end, March 31st, 2025 appropriations budget recently. At the end of the month, we had appropriation balance of $13,798,453 and some change, or approximately 80% of our budget left. And I will cover that in more detail under the first quarter update. For the investment report and our four funds that are invested with the Trust Indiana Investment Pool, we have a balance of $13,147,800. The average daily yield from March was 4.3003, or down a four-tenths since February. And the average daily yield year-to-date was 4.354, down two-tenths, two and a half tenths of a percent since February.
We're now ready for the approval of bills? Yes. During March, we spent a total of $1,339,684.33 on general expenditures during various frauds. We also had two payrolls in March. The first was $373,024.12, and the second was $542,483.8. I would ask that these be approved by the board. So that's in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second? Second. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. We are now ready for item 7D, which is the Quarterly Budget Status Update.
So just normal activity for the first quarter of the year. This does include detail of our income for the year-to-date as of March 31st. One thing I would point out is that we have added interest for checking account. We, well, right above that line item is the. interest from investments, as you see, we've already collected in the first three months, eighty thousand dollars, which is five thousand dollars over what we budgeted for, so we're doing great on investment income. Um, I had a meeting with our bank representative, First Federal Savings Bank, and uh, we talked about changing our checking account, which previously did not earn any interest into a it's basically what they call free business, um, with public funds, uh, checking accounts, so we are now earning interest. And that sixty eight dollars was just for half a month of March, so uh, we'll be adding interest in that, that area as well. Um, everything else is as, working as normal. Um, we are, uh, head in our, what we call our manual charges, which is mainly our passport fees and a few other miscellaneous charges that we have throughout the system, so those, those are ahead of schedule as well, with only forty eight percent of the budget amount to be collected for the year. Under the expenditure side, uh, we have a target out there as if we would expend, uh, the budget in one twelfth increments throughout the year. Um, and as our treasurer, as Bob, um, asked me earlier, why some of the lines had, uh, very high balance left. Uh, it's mostly due to timing, like our insurance, we don't pay our insurance until it renews in August, so after August in the September meeting, we'll be paying our, our, uh, property and liability insurances. Um, other factors are just based on when we pay for the payroll system, our U T G system, it's on a quarterly basis. And then our accounting software is paid on an annual basis, so some of those type of items, you won't, you'll see a high balance until later in the year when they're paid, so. Um, there was nothing, uh, critical that at this point in time, after the first quarter, that was low in income or low in, um, balance. The one thing you might notice that had a low balance left in it is the, um, cataloging authority control, which is towards the top of the page, second page. And there's only thirty eight percent of that budget left because we pay one incremental amount at the beginning of each year. And then we pay as we go for some other, um, expenses in the cataloging of our collection. Any questions?
Hearing none, uh, we are ready for other business. Item, uh, eight A, which is the disposal of furniture and equipment. Some action item, and I'm not sure who's presenting this, is that you, Lori?
So there are a number of surplus items the library no longer needs or damaged or are out of date, and therefore EBPL requests the following list be transferred to the foundation, the EBPL foundations in accordance with Indiana Code thirty six dash twelve dash three dash five C. And the top portion of this list is, uh, new tables and chairs that came in for uh, some of our locations, and so the old ones. Yes, that's what you're sitting on right now. Um, so the old ones are being, um, disposed of or repurposed and given to the foundation, uh, to, um, do as they see fit, uh, from a foundation standpoint. Whether they sell them, donate them, et cetera. And then the bottom half is a list of I T equipment. And most of it has no value whatsoever to it, um, they only find them on there, it's the desktop computers, three of which had about a five dollar value. Is what we can get out of those. And, um, most of the other equipment will be recycled, uh, through, um, C and I, and yes, they've been wiped.
You didn't even have to ask?
So I'd seek a motion from the board too.
So moved. Have a motion in a second, any comments or questions for Lori?
Uh, what does the, you might know better than anybody else here, what does the foundation do with this stuff usually?
Uh, well, actually Lori knows, she's been doing this a lot longer than I've been on the foundation. Longer than I have been doing it. Uh, but the foundation would take this, a lot of times they're doing auction. Uh, uh, we've, uh, procured the services of an auction company.
Donation, yeah.
Yep.
And I can say Heather's already worked hard with some, um, nonprofit groups to take some of the stuff already, so we have some tentative homes once this was done, so.
This will go to the foundation board for acceptance, and then they can determine how they want to dispose or uh, repurpose it at their April twenty third meeting.
Yep.
Were you wanting that L home surveillance?
I would get one of the, um, laptop.
So the laptops, the reason they have a zero value is because they're too old. Um, eight of those were purchased in twenty thirteen, and they will not run Windows eleven, and that's why we're getting rid of them.
There you go. Okay. Uh, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori. We are now ready for my favorite item on the agenda is when a staff member sings a song.
Yes.
Tristan Riggs here tonight, thank you.
You need to come up front.
Yes, please.
Yes. Hello, everybody, first of all, thank you all so much for coming to our beautiful location, uh, we take a lot of pride here, yeah, at West. Um, and I know this is a staff spotlight, but I want to take a minute to thank uh, our facilities team, our custodial team, everybody that does a great job in keeping up this wonderful, beautiful historical library. Um, we're about a hundred and twelve years old now, so, um, please come upstairs when we're done, take a look because it is a fabulous space. So I have been with EDPL for five years. This is my second time actually at West, um, I have been manager here for about a year next month, and, um, I'm partial, but it is my favorite location. Uh, we do have a unique opportunity at this location to really partner with community, um, organizations and work with the parks department. And host some of our own programs outside, but, um, as well as working with, uh, organizations like Love La Masco, um, we did an Easter account with them. We actually do a Franklin Street Bazaar craft every Saturday of the bazaar here, um, so we get tons of new people in for that every single week, um, and I just also want to shout out our staff here at West. They do an amazing job, um, connecting with these community partners and really prioritizing our community here on the west side, so.
Yeah, thank you, any questions for Tristan?
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Uh, announcements, I do want to begin with one, uh, one of the best things you can do is honor folks who are inspiration to you and folks who give service to our community and especially our libraries. And, uh, he was not able to join us last meeting when we had this first time. But Eric Williams served as president of this Board of Trustees uh, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, what?
I think he's waiting for a pie in the face.
I hear my name, it usually means work.
Eric is one of my heroes and he should be an inspiration. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
He is a man of few words.
And I'm going to try to be as well, but, um, I cannot top Eric's service for this two years of present and all of his years here on the board, we really truly do appreciate him. Um, but I'd also like to take this time to thank the admin staff, particularly, um, Lori, Heather and Lamont, who have been just killing themselves on all these building projects and keeping all the balls in the air. And a million details of how to do things legally correctly, having the information at a moment's notice off the top of their head most of the time, and it is a tremendous help for our community, all the things they do to get behind the scenes that just people don't see, to get these projects done, working with our whole team of Baker Tilly and Ice Meller and M K M. It's a lot of hours going through this and they work extremely hard at it. I know Lamont, working with their contractors right now on multiple facilities projects right now, is just running his tail off because he's all over the place and was at multiple buildings as we had construction going, so. Literally, literally. So, but I want to thank them because they've done a tremendous, tremendous job.
Yeah, and in addition to that, I, I had a chance to attend the speaker event with Timothy Egan, which was fantastic event. But it ran flawless and the attention to detail by the administrative staff and the way that program run and all the speaker events that I've been able to.
So glad you said that, because we have one next week.
So what a great.
Uh, and so having Rob staying here next week, we're very excited, it is in your packet, all the information, but he will be here and hosted with us in collaboration with Cypress. Who is taking around the schools and having him talk to students at multiple.
Graphic novelist, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So excellent opportunities and wonderful things for our community.
Victory, sorry.
Victory?
Yeah.
All right. Any other announcements?
Only comment I was going to make, other than the staff song and dance that we get every once in a while.
Yeah.
The monthly public reports, which I always enjoy reading. This is one of my favorites, and that's a pretty good set of numbers right now.
Mm hmm.
So that speaks highly.
Mm hmm.
So it's very nice to see that for the audience, it's the, it's the open positions report that we harp on quite a bit to have open positions for extended periods of time and to have one full time position in an organization this size, that's a pretty good deal.
I believe that too, that, uh, I think the administration has worked hard, the board has responded. And, uh, we have wonderful staff and staff that love our community and love our libraries. Make it so that our community loves our libraries too, and, uh, that, I, I do think that report speaks to that. Any other?
Happy National Library Week.
Speak now, forever, oh, dear. Peace. Thank you again, uh, everyone, and I will now, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll do that, the next one's going to be here or?
Oakland down.
It doesn't matter, you show up down. Yeah. All right, thanks again.
Thank you.